All right. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors for August 10, 2022, and we are called to order. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
Present.
Ms. Buckner, she is here today.
Nice.
Ms. Cortez.
Here.
Ms. Ford.
Here.
Dr. Jones.
Present.
Ms. Wolsey.
Here.
Mr. Hogan.
Here. All right. And the agenda is approved by acclamation, so we'll move into a review of the action items, June.
There are two action items outstanding. I've just received the DAC dates, or the dates for the District Advisory Council, which will be added to the calendar and in the Friday update. And we are still awaiting the sixth grade RTI scores and the comparison with what happened when they go to the next level. And Churnus is working with that to get those scores in. Mr. Rand, you look like you gave those to me and I didn't recognize you received them. No, not yet. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, June. And a warm, warm welcome and permanent welcome to Dr. Collier up here on the dais. Her first opportunity to be here and not have to worry about Dr. Bedell following. So thank you for being here. Thanks for your continued commitment to Kansas City Public Schools and excited to have you sitting up here with us. All right. With that being said, I'll just turn it over to you, Dr. Collier, for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Board Chair Hogan, board members, staff, families and community. This evening, we will be providing an update on three key areas. For our workshop presentation, the first will be Summer Academy, just providing an overview of our summer school services and opportunities for our children and also some data around summer school programming. That will be followed by an opening of schools update, making sure that our community and our families are aware of key informational items as we prepare for the start of school. And then we will end this evening's report with Policy 0.0, our equity policy. So at this time, I'm going to turn things over to our Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, who was our point person for Summer Academy, Dr. Lloyd Jackson. And also joining him will be Lori Peters, who was our summer school coordinator.
Board Chair Hogan, Superintendent Dr. Collier and board members, good evening. My name is Lori Peters and I was a summer school coordinator. And Dr. Jackson, our Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership and myself, will be presenting the achievement and successes of Summer Academy this evening. Summer Academy allows our students to address any remediation, receive enrichment and credit recovery. Our high school students are able to attain original high school credit in specific courses. In Summer Academy 20, our enrollment was at 4,505 students. And then returning in person after the COVID pandemic, our enrollment was at 2,165. The current status of this Summer Academy, we had 18 days of enrichment for our students. We served 12 of our school sites and we also had two community partnerships. Through Manual Career and Tech Institute, we actually had 44 student interns serving throughout the district. And also 43 students were able to receive CTE courses. Our K through 8 students were able to receive experiences that allowed them to have exposure to different service learning projects and they were grade specific. And at this time, I would like to hand it over to Dr. Jackson.
Thanks, Lori. Lori and team did a phenomenal job with Summer Academy this summer and we want to talk through some of the data points that we have for us today. And we spent 18 days, and I want to emphasize that, for 18 days, we worked these young people on standards that were for the upcoming school year. So if I was a third grader, I took fourth grade curriculum. And so we saw some growth from our pre-data to our post-data in those 18 days. Just pointing out a few highlighted areas there around our kindergarten rates there for ELA at 57.9%. Looking there in that math, and you know, math is a world in which when we look at our data from map data from school year '21, '22, we saw some opportunities for growth there. And we see that in the Summer Academy, and in just a moment, we'll look through some other data points to kind of talk to the level of assignments. But you see that our students again saw some successes in their math world in grade second, third and fourth. And a pretty significant way there, they improved those scores. And so wanted to highlight just a few pieces there. Overall, our students grew over for summer school and in a pretty good rate that we like to see and will continue to work that again. 18 days of our teachers really pouring into them and really being intentional around this work was certainly beneficial for them. Then we did some survey data. We wanted to hear from our stakeholders and the first set, we just, we highlighted just a couple of things from each of the stakeholder groups. You got the full packet of the survey. I'm sure you had a chance to dive through it. But we wanted to underscore just a couple of things from the student survey. So how many times each week did your teacher give you feedback? And we know that research tells us for students to have growth academically and maybe hear how they're doing and get some positive feedback, but also some critical feedback around their work. And a good majority of our students saw feedback at least twice or more a week. And so we want to continue to ensure that those students are getting that feedback in the form of response to assignments, verbal feedback or response to their questions in the classroom. And so those students did get that feedback during our time together during the Summer Academy. Next question we pulled out for your preview today and for certainly for the public is how would you describe those assignments? And that goes back to that survey data or the pre and post data we just talked through. For the most part, our students thought the assignments were either right on target or just a tad bit difficult, which is where you want them to be, both in line with them being able to feeling empowered, ready to do the work, but also feeling challenged at certain times. And so we're working at 23% of students or so who thought it was too easy. And how can we enrich their experiences as well? Then we had our parent, again, pulling out a couple of things there. And I will point out for the students, we surveyed just our third through 12th graders. And then for our parents, any of all of our parents who have an opportunity to give back some feedback to us, and we had it in both English and in Spanish. So our first question here, did you get contacted after you got enrolled? And we know that's an area we want to really improve upon, but 70% of our students, our parents, sorry, said they did get some communication from us and we want to improve upon that. And we'll talk about that a little later in the presentation as we talk about some opportunities for growth. Also, we pulled out where you provided multiple points of communication, touchpoints. Once, and once you got enrolled into Summer Academy, and again, we have some strongly agrees there, certainly a good majority of our parents agreed, but some opportunities to improve that pace for us as well. Would love to see 90% of our parents, 100% of our parents, if we could, really feel as if we're communicating back and forth in that conversation with them. And then we talked to our teachers, or surveyed our teachers, to say, how did we do with our district PD? And the teachers had three days of professional development, first day being a district PD. And so was it beneficial to you? 54% of those agreed to that. Another 16 or so percent said they strongly agree. But we have some room to grow there, some opportunities. How do we ensure that our PD we're offering benefits all of our teachers when they show up to that space that it's beneficial? And so as we plan out for the upcoming school year, we'll be honing into this kind of survey data to say, what can we do differently? Because they did give us some words. Again, you saw those words and some qualitative data on what we can do to improve. And so we'll take those into consideration as we move forward. We also asked them about technology. And I do want to pat our technology team on the back. They do get a lot of beat downs. But in this situation, our teachers said the technology was certainly beneficial and aligned to the work they need to do within the Summer Academy curriculum. So kudos to our technology department. So here are our barriers and opportunities. And you see those and I'll highlight just a few of them. Communication, communication, communication is something we're highlighting and certainly looking at as we go forward, as we create our plan, we're going to monitor that plan to ensure that that's being carried out, that we have those regular touchpoints with our families as we lead up to summer school and that hard, after the hard deadline and beyond. And then we talked about our special population enrollment. We had about 1,200 students who were English language learners, special education students, and our Senate Bill 319 students who we enrolled, the system enrolled after that May 2nd, which impacted some of our services. And so how do we ensure that that timeline is moved up to ensure that they have all things they need in order to be successful, they're being communicated with as well along this journey? And then as we look at our supply order, supply and demand there, looking at that timeline, backing it up even further to ensure that on day one, in advance of day one of summer school, that we are ready to rock and roll with our supplies for our teachers to move forward with instruction. Then our successes. We had some pretty good successes in the sense that we came back from a pandemic and we saw a dip in enrollment. And we're back in person for year number two and we see a continuing increase in enrollment for summer school to 3,180 some odd students. Also, those students who did show up for summer school, 94% of them got the attendance incentive, which meant they came to school 17 or more days out of the 18. And that's exciting to see that they showed up and they were engaged in the learning. And we also saw that in our data when it comes to our pre and post, that that engagement made a difference. We also had 484 credits obtained at the nine through 12 level. And what that says is we had 968 courses taken by those students and passed for credit, which is another positive as students make their way towards graduation and being on time for graduation. And then we had staff who had perfect attendance. 79% of our teachers and 56% of our peer professionals had perfect attendance during that. And we know the impact of perfect attendance for our teachers, having a quality instructor in front of our students was important. Our students showing up every day was important. And so the two combined showed growth for our students over the 18 days we had them for Summer Academy. As we move forward, again, you've heard me say and I'll continue to put on the forefront, Ms. Hope and I will work well together over the next few months as we talk about our communication plan for our, for our families and for internal and external stakeholders in this process. And we'll continue to begin that process of planning out soon and early so that the teams we bring together come together to really make for a great, robust plan as we press forward in this process. And then ultimately, we want to continue to refine our processes, our procedures, solidify those in writing so that no matter who's standing up here to do this type of work, they know what to do, how to do it, and we have that continuity of this work. We're open the floor for questions.
Thank you, Lori and Dr. Jackson. Questions, Mr. Barca?
Yeah, if we can go back to the service learning side, first off, kudos to all the rest of the slides. I just, that just to me blows my minds and I've already tweeted about it, so thank you for all that effort. But the service learning component, I think this is very interesting. And I know it's happened for the last three years now, I think.
At least two.
And so tell me about some of the outcomes here, because I'm curious as to what the students specifically reduce, reuse, recycle, which is not a surprise to some here. You know, are they proposing plans in schools that then we don't actually have a formalized recycling program for that school or what is their intent here?
So the intent here, and we work very closely, part of our team is the curriculum team. And so they sit at the table and help us process through these things. The intent with these particular projects is to take what we are learning during the day, the first part of our day. Most of the service learning projects happen in the second half of our day. It's to take what that learning I have in mathematics, that learning I have in science and then use it. And it may be talking through what's the impact of recycling. And so if I don't recycle, what does that look like in the landfills? And so using some mathematical formulas, those kinds of things to do that. And then some of that could be that they're developing a plan as you get a little older, a little up in the grades, that that's looking at that piece. So it varies, but the bulk of this is taking what I've learned and then applying that learning in ELA, that learning in science, the learning in math.
This is a great example, and that's obviously first grade, so they're not building recycling programs for their school necessarily, but the concepts and the tenants are important. I just want to get to a place where we're utilizing some of the student work here and their intent is making broader impact. And so any way we can figure out how to plug those things in and continue the service learning throughout school and expanding it, that robust understanding and perspective on all these things, I think is critically important for all of our students. So kudos all around here.
Thank you. Making learning relevant is the goal there.
Dr. Jones.
Thank you. This sounds like it was an exciting program this summer. So thank y'all for the presentation. I, it's incumbent upon me to raise the issue of the attendance goals. So I know attendance in general is important, but we are in an era where people do get sick. And so I learned from some very zealous kids who were friends of my own kids this summer that they only got, I think, two days. So if you miss one day, you could still be in the running for your $100 incentive, by the way, which is very compelling for a lot of our families. But I'm thinking, okay, are you sneezing and coughing? So I think that's, I know 18 days is only so long and we have outcomes that we're trying to get to. But we really should be in the interest of health, moving past these attendance goals for everybody. It compels people to show up when they shouldn't be there.
Certainly understand. I hear the conversation there and it begs, do we continue? What does that look like for the incentive side of things? Are we incentivizing coming to school sick or in essence coming to work sick or whatever it looks like? So I certainly hear the concern there.
Ms. Buckner.
I'm so excited to see the data because I asked for this last year and it's here. So thank you for this.
We do listen and learn.
Yes. Okay. So I just have a few questions. I think the first one, and a little bit of push here. When I'm looking at the survey questions, it is very like task based, right? Is there communication? Is that? And so what I wanted, really want us to move toward is like really looking at the efficacy of our efforts. So like, for instance, how many times each week did your teacher provide feedback to you? Feedback could be a great, right? And so I really, if the question was reframed, like my teacher talked to me about how I'm doing in class would be a better question for students, for us to really get insight on how students understand how they're moving through the learning process, right? I think that's a much better question. When we talk about, I think the other student survey question, how would you describe the assignments during Summer Academy? That was perfect. So questions like that, that really get to the heart of what we're looking for. When we talk about, we want to enrich students' experiences and we want to raise their grades or fill gaps that they're having. I think another question that I had is really when we talk about the curriculum that teachers are provided. I would just like to see questions that really get at the heart of, does this curriculum address students' needs, right? And then to, in that same vein, I would love to hear like what the framework is for service learning. Or do teachers have the autonomy to create their own projects, like a project based, problem based, or do you all have a framework for this?
Sure. I'm going to try to go back and answer a couple of those other questions on the front end about the survey data. I think if we had the time, this slide would be a lot longer of future planning. Because we have a lot of things we want to go back and refine, survey being one of them. What data are we really getting and then working with our research and accountability team? How can we get better data around this to really move, as you put on the table, that action? How do we know what we're putting on the table for them and then move that forward? So certainly on our list of things to do. And when it comes to our service learning, our hope is when a teacher comes into Summer Academy, that we do a lot of the heavy lifting for them. Now, are they welcome to add some things to that? Yes. But we give them in essence, three days off and then we thrust them into Summer Academy. And we want the best and the greatest teachers to do this work. And so we try to do a lot of heavy lifting. And our curriculum department does a great job of developing these service learnings that tie to that learning without a lot of heavy lifting by the teacher. But if a teacher desires to add into that and make that a little more robust for them and their work that they're doing and make it more relevant if it needs to be, that's certainly welcomed. We give them the framework and we try to give them, again, as much as we can in order to make this work, this light, this load lighter for them.
I really appreciate that. I think that's really important with us having a short amount of time to really jump into summer school. So my next question is like, where do we get these topics from? Because as we lean into being more culturally responsive, I wonder, we make, as adults, we make a lot of assumptions about like this is what's going to really engage students. Like, you know, reduce, recycle, reuse, you know, that is important for students. But is there different language that students are using or seeing now? So I just wonder like where we are getting these topics from and how often are they reviewed to be updated in response to what students want to learn about?
Certainly. Great, great question. And it is something that we review every year. And so again, during our planning process, our curriculum and instruction team are at the table with us the entire time. And many of those service learning projects come from community partners or in partnership with. And so how do we take a field trip to expose our students to different areas within our community and we create a lesson around that particular learning? And I wish I could, and I'm happy to share the more detailed list and what those partnerships were, because I don't have them off the top of my head. But they are, and most of them are in conjunction with a community partner and some type of field trip, if it's to the Nelson-Ackin Museum or things of that nature to kind of, again, create that culture for our students and an opportunity for them to get exposed to different things within the Kansas City community.
And then last question. I saw that there were two community partners. And then you mentioned that we have multiple community partners.
So we have two different things happening there. So we, during summer school, partner with, and there's a partnership process with those individuals who actually do the learning and teaching for those students, not the learning, but the teaching of those students. So the Boys and Girls Club, our students attend Boys and Girls Club and not come to Summer Academy with KCPS. Same thing for Alvin Ailey. And so those are community partners and from that sense. But then we partner, as in going to a field trip. in going to a field trip, bringing in guest speakers, those kind of things, with that service learning part, with individuals who are just coming to support the work we're doing within the Summer Academy, within KCPS.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I guess I'm last. So one, I'd say clearly a much better Summer Academy experience than what we had previously, so thank you for that. I mean, it was, I think we had a discussion yesterday morning in officers meeting around, you know, we haven't really heard, and our parents are not shy, right? They're pretty vocal about their experiences, which is good, you want that. So clearly a much better experience, so kudos for all of the work that everyone put in on, on that. And I love the successes as well. I mean, I think we, we really knocked it out of the park. That said, one thing that I think is missing that we've tried to reinforce in the past is like, there's no trend data here. So I can't tell you, did we really do, from an outcome perspective, better than we did last year or the year before, or the year before that? And there's value in seeing that trend data, right, in terms of like, am I improving? Am I not improving? Lessons learned, et cetera? So I would continue to encourage the district to put trending data out there. Obviously, on the surveys, they're new, you hadn't done those in the past, and so you're not going to have it there, but on some of these others, we will certainly have. And so it'd be interesting to see the trend data going forward. I was going to give Ms. Buckner kudos on the survey questions, but she kind of gave it to herself, but you, which is okay too, but no, seriously, like, I love the push of like, let's hear what students are thinking, let's hear what parents are thinking, and I would, I'd push on you a little bit, Dr. Jackson, because I think one of the things that Ms. Buckner was trying to tease out is around those topics, the service learning opportunities, I didn't hear like, are students really able to put their voice forward and tell you what they want to learn? It's good that partners want to, but let's get the students what they want to learn, because they're going to be much more excited about it and much more engaged. And so that would just be one, one other thing I would push on. Other than that, I think it was a, it was a great presentation and a good job this summer, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Just a, a couple of things to add on to what you put on the table. I do, as I, I hope I had, did earlier, appreciate the many departments that came together. This was, everyone that was sitting at the table, talking through, what is it that we need to do in order for this to be successful? Took our lessons learned, we went back to the PowerPoint from last September, and we said, okay, what did we learn from all these pieces? And we brought those people who were engaged in that, and we said, what can we do differently in order to make this? So I want to appreciate all of our partners at the table. There's certainly a district effort in that, and a, as we push forward, we're going to continue. So when you start looking at our trends, some of our trend challenges, we had a pandemic year, we're online a year, and so when I look at the last three years, it's hard to do apples to apples. And so we're certainly going to be looking toward, how do we ensure that that pre-post data is a trend? How do we do year-over-year? That our survey data, year-over-year, as we tweak those questions? So certainly noted, and we'll continue to refine that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Dr. Collier?
Yes, thank you. I would like to, to commend Dr. Jackson and Ms. Peters on their work for summer school, really, you know, taking the, the feedback that we received last year and really applying it and ensuring that it was a much smoother process. So I want to say thank you to both of them. At this time, we're going to move into our opening of school update. We know that there probably are questions around how are we managing COVID-19, and so we know we're not fully out of the pandemic, and so we want to make sure we're answering some of those questions. Also giving some information around our academic focus for the year, so that we're all aware of what our five big rocks will be. And then also looking at enrollment, transportation, and other areas. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and call up Sarah Williams and Lauren Grimes, who will be giving us our COVID-19 update, and then we'll move further throughout the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. Good evening, Board Chair Hogan, board members. Just wanted to give you a brief update and for our key updates for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and that is that KCPS will still be following CDC guidance. We will still be following the science as we move into year three of pandemic. Staff and students are strongly encouraged to stay up to date on their COVID-19 vaccine and boosters. Masking is strongly encouraged when the CDC says that Jackson County is in a high community rate of transmission. As you see, that, that verbiage is strongly recommended and, and not required at this time. However, strongly recommended does mean being at the schools and making sure that, that kiddos have every opportunity to have masks that we will continue to have on hand, and that staff are, are well aware that we are in a high rate of transmission. Those guidelines will be available on our COVID-19 dashboard, so when you go to the COVID-19 dashboard, which should be updated tomorrow morning, it will give you a snapshot of the widget from the CDC, so you plug in the state and the county, and it'll show you what your community transmission rate is. That is updated by the CDC every Thursday. Hopefully tomorrow, when they update, it'll be in yellow, but we, we, we shall see. But, but it'll be strong, mask will be strongly encouraged when we're in that high community transmission rate. We will still continue to carry an ample supply of masks available to staff, students, and visitors at our KCPS sites. We are very fortunate to have no-cost testing in association with Children's Mercy Hospital. This will be available at all of our sites, and everyone is strongly encouraged to participate. Folks just need to contact the school nurse, as they have been, to participate in that testing. Parents, guardians, visitors, volunteers are welcome to KCPS sites for district-approved events. We just ask that, that folks follow all of our COVID-19 mitigation strategies. So this is just a little snapshot of the widget that's up on the, that'll be up on the website this evening under our COVID data dashboard. So our school nurses, Nurse Grimes and her teams, will assess and communicate isolation protocol to students, staffs, and families. Our mitigation strategies remain strong, and we strongly encourage folks just to, you know, use our common practical sense of staying home when ill. Bus transportation will continue to support masking protocols during those high community transmission times. Our air quality mitigation strategies continue. Our continuous cleaning strategies will, will still, still be ongoing. Frequent hand washing and sanitizing and that, that personal hygiene component will still be strongly encouraged. And like I said, masking strongly encouraged when our community transmission rate is at that high level. Breakfast in the classroom and breakfast to go were such successful things for our students that we're, we're going to go ahead and keep, keep with that, and then our lunch will go back and transition back to cafeterias. Our sports and activities governed by MSHA will follow MSHA and KCPS COVID-19 guidelines. Instructional contingency planning for school year twenty-three, when we have a student who needs to isolate at home due to COVID, whether that's by test, let's say they're, they test positive, they're asymptomatic, feeling well enough for school but have to isolate due to CDC protocols, we will have those family support teachers available to help them through Google Classroom or through Seesaw, and work packets will be available, pre, prepackaged and ready for, for kids to go to support their learning while during that isolation period at home. And Lauren will get, and Nurse Grimes will get into more about, about what that's going to look like for our kids and what that looks like for our staff as well. Ah, here she is, Lauren.
All right, so this flow chart kind of shows how we're handling COVID. We are not quarantining anybody who is a contact, but we will require them to wear a mask for ten days after their last exposure. That being said, if they have symptoms and they are a contact, they need to stay home. But these are asymptomatic contacts, meaning they have no symptoms, they can come to school, but they must wear a mask. Anybody who has tested positive, students or staff, must stay home for five days af, after symptom onset, day one being the day after symptoms start, or if there's a positive test, it would be, and no symptoms, it would be the day after the test was, was given. Not the day we get the results, but the day the test was given. They may come, students may come back on day six with a mask, and they wear that mask from day six to day ten. Staff will be required, and, and let me, let me go back here. They can come back on day six if they are, have been fever-free for twenty-four hours, have symptom improvement, feel like they can get through a day, and wear their mask. So this is, you know, if they had a fever yesterday, they're not, they, they're not released to come back to school. They have to be fever-free twenty-four hours, and that's KCPS policy period. So staff will have that same requirement of being fever-free twenty-four hours, symptom improvement, feeling like they can get through a day, but they are also required to have a negative rapid test that morning on day six. If they do not test negative on day six, they may test again on day seven, day eight, day nine. On day ten, they can come back without testing. If they come back on day six because they tested negative, they still must wear their mask from day six to day ten. And so, I think I covered all of that. Students that are sent home or, or home on isolation, their name will be entered in, in a form that KCBA has access to, and those family support teachers will reach out to those students, and they will still get to continue their learning while they're at home, as long as they feel, you know, up to being able to, to do some work. So I think.
I think we have one more, and this is just really applicable to our staff, who have just been stellar throughout this whole, whole event. As of August eighth, we're going to revert to PTO for, for sick days. This is in line with school districts across our region and, and businesses across the country, schools across the country. Required weekly testing for unvaccinated staff ends, and staff vaccine card collection ends. No more incentives at this time for, for vaccine, which was a great help to us, but, but we're ready to, to push on a little bit from there. We will continue to work with the Health Department and Children's Mercy Hospital to gain up-to-the-minute local guidance to keep students, staff, families safe and healthy. Our COVID-19 dashboard, staff and family handbooks and flow chart will be available on our website on our COVID tab. Any questions, concerns?
Thank you, ladies. And Ms. Grimes, by the way, I love that you don't really need a mic at all. Like, here, just like, here it is. Mr. Abarkom?
Yeah, so I just did a quick Google search of these protocols, and there seems to be like five different nebulous things as to the process, and so I think there's an opportunity to clean it up and make it very concise for families, just as you described it. So that might be an action item that I would request, is that we do that very, fairly quickly. So if somebody's looking for, what is the policy? How do I respond? What do I do? This is it.
The flow chart does, it's, I know it's hard to see on the, on the little screen, but it says, do I have symptoms? Have I tested positive? What do I do?
I just Googled KCPS COVID protocols, and the first three links that came up didn't bring that flow chart up at all. And so it seemed like some of those things might be dated, so it seems like there's just an opportunity to clean up and make it more concise so that folks know what to do right now.
Sure, we'll, we'll do that. We'll work with the communications team and, and make sure that that gets updated.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Thank you for the presentation. So I have a question. I'm not sure if it's you that will answer it, or maybe Ms. Thompson. So if I am a child that feels like I've tested positive, but I'm asymptomatic, right? Like, and I'm doing all my assignments, what is the attendance for that child?
They didn't have everything.
Oh, different person.
Mr. Rand?
Yeah, so basically, as long as that student completes assignments and has five hours of contact, we're allowed to count them under homebound, and the homebound attendance code counts as present.
So, not getting too specific, who's tracking all of that? Like, the teacher, the registrar at the school? How does all that? That's always, you know, I always worry that people know how to code that child.
Yes, so we, Dr. Jackson actually just released that information, or is about to release that information, and in the slip to principals. So ultimately, it's the principal's responsibility to ensure that that's occurring correctly at their building.
So as a parent, I might want to just keep track of that in Infinite Campus to make sure my child's being coded correctly? Would that be another way for me to check that?
Let me double-check. I don't want to say something that is incorrect, but yes, I believe that the excuse code pops up on the attendance screen when you see the daily attendance.
Ms. Buckner?
So when you were talking, I was like, thinking about myself being a, a classroom teacher, and I'm like, that's a lot of math, right? We got kids who got sick and then need to be out a certain amount of type days, you know what I mean? So I think my question is like, I wonder if classroom teachers, so if a student comes and they had, they, they had COVID, they were sent home, that means the whole class has been exposed at that point, right? Close contact.
It's, the official definition of close contact is six feet, within six feet for fifteen minutes. So it's not always an entire class that will be exposed. It depends, the older grades, they sit in their seats, they don't move, the person in the front of the class isn't going to be, the person in the back of the class isn't going to be a contact with the person in the front of the class. Does that make sense?
No, because I'm thinking about an elementary school teacher. Okay? Kids walk around, there's close contact. So my point is, if a kid is, comes into class sick, the entire class for ten days has to be masked.
Possibly, yes.
Yes. So the teacher would be expected to monitor students in that class all wearing masks for ten days. So I think my, my question here is like, making sure that those teachers are aware, that they are to monitor that, and that we have masks on hand in each classroom for the duration of the ten days.
Sure. Ms. Buckner, that makes, that makes perfect sense. Where we've been for the past couple of years is we've been in a mask requirement, so, so teachers and staff and families have always been giving those gentle reminders all the time to, to go ahead and, and mask up. Those, those students who are in that, in that protocol of close contact but not required to be home, will certainly let their classroom teacher know that that's occurring. The nurse will know, they will have, they will have support in that. We will have masks available. I just talked with Mr. Ofield last week to make sure that, that we are going to have an ample supply of masks. We have already currently an ample supply of masks, and more, he expects that that supply could, could reach a limit around semester, and has, has made plans to order more for the second semester as well. But I totally understand your point.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
I have a follow-up question that goes a little bit to what Manny was asking about the clear flow chart of things. So that flow chart is assuming that families go to this website on their own, so I'm wanting to know, what are we doing from a proactive standpoint to communicate since the beginning of a school year, to just communicate out the gate what our protocols are for COVID? We have new families, and it's the beginning of a new school year.
Sure. So been in contact with LA Moxley today about the communications protocol for those, for those messages going out proactively to families. She has some teed up that'll go out, I, I believe, tomorrow.
Yes, the website update, and, and the family card. So we have been working closely with Sarah and Lauren on these updates. We have them teed up to publish online later this evening. We have prepared, based on these key takeaways, lists for families and for staff that we can send out tomorrow, basically as soon as we have board approval. We will continue to emphasize those messages as well on our social media channels and in our newsletters.
So that's still electronic communication, but school level.
Sure, so I, I can address that. And the Principals Institute, I've already given them a preview of the information, have provided slides for them to use, utilize in back-to-school presentations, to utilize on their talking points, whatever it is they feel is the best way to communicate out with families, would be, would be that general, general protocol. I mean, I think, I think the, kind of the good news is, is if folks aren't keyed in and have been with us last year, they may be expecting to mask. So, so this might be welcome news, that it's something that's not absolutely mandated at this time or required, but will just depend on the level of community spread and transmission. And just, and being in schools last year and seeing how kids respond and react to, to masking and, and being a responsible citizen just blew me away. And I, I fully, fully expect that our kids will continue in that same vein, along with our staff and students when it's necessary. We want to keep everyone safe and healthy, and I think everyone feels a strong ethical duty to do that.
Ms. Wolfsey?
So I just want to make sure I understand that if, if there is an exposure, like I, my child is COVID-positive, I obviously let the school nurse know. Beyond that, is it still, like, contact tracing's not taking place? So how does the, then, the rest of the class know?
The Health Department is still contact tracing for those under eighteen. And so, but any, anybody who is identified, I mean, if we know a whole class is, is a close contact, we will let that class know. But the Health Department is still contact tracing for those under eighteen, and they would also let anybody know. We are also asking people. those under 18, and they would also let anybody know. We are also asking people, if they, like, as part of the new guidelines, we ask, people are being asked to let people know if you're a contact. So like, if I have COVID, and I'm sitting next to Sarah, it's my responsibility to let Sarah know. So, you know, we're going to count on that a little bit, especially adults, but for kids, we're still gonna, I mean, we're still gonna let people know.
And also, Ms. Wolfsey, we're required to report to the Health Department. So then the Health Department, that's what starts those dominoes for their contact tracing protocol.
Okay, thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Dr. Collier?
All right, at this time, we're going to move into our transportation update. And then that will be followed by the five areas of focus for the school year, our professional learning, and the Leadership Institute, so we don't have to stop for each one.
All right, good evening. So all of this is a part of our opening of schools report. And so as we continue through the report, just wanted to let everyone know that every single department does come together each week, and we monitor where we are in relation to a smooth opening for this school year. And so I do want to commend every department for ensuring we have representation, and if there are any items that we need to address in real time, we're able to do that through those weekly meetings. And so we are tracking things such as our teachers, being able to see their rosters when they come back, when they returned on the 9th, making sure that parents are able to view their child's class schedule on next week, on the 15th. There are many items that we're monitoring each and every week. So one of those is student transportation. That's what you see on the screen. We do want to highlight that we sent out last week, or early on Monday of this week, the postcards. So they went out a couple weeks earlier than they have in the past. So every family by next Monday should have, due in timely notice, of their child's bus stop, they have time to go and take the student there and so forth, and the wait time is there on the postcard. So we're clearly communicating that first day of school. Also, the Safe Stop Bus Tracking app, that information will also be on the postcard, where parents can then download that app. And as they're at work, and they're able to look at the GPS on the app, they can see that the child has made it onto the bus, and is moving toward the destination, which is the school. So really excited about that. A second thing we want to point out is that we had a goal of 137 bus drivers, and we were able to retain a high count from this past year. And kudos to the transportation team and others who were able to support in recruiting 20 additional drivers, and they are now in training. So we were able to reach our goal in order to have a fully-staffed driver count. As we shift to our instructional focus, I do want to, before we get to the five areas of focus that you see there on the screen, I do want to introduce, we have a new team member in the audience, and welcome to Team KCPS. She's over this shoulder, Ms. Latonya Franklin, who is our new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. So we want to welcome her, and you will have an opportunity to hear more from her in board meetings to come. So as Dr. Collier indicated, we do have five areas of focus, or what she likes to call our big rocks. So as we know, many things can be important, but everything cannot be a priority. So we are setting clarity around our five areas of focus, and you see those here on the screen: literacy, math, cultural responsive practices, social-emotional wellness, and parent and family engagement. We will hear the more robust plan under each of these pillars throughout the school year. We're going to front-load those for you, so that you understand and know all of the different initiatives and campaigns that are housed within each of these. So these are just a few examples of strategies that are underway. So I'll call your attention to some of those that are highlighted. So we will have a reading campaign this year that will not only make it clear to families and staff, the community, that KCPS loves to read. And so you will see in future weeks, the hashtags, the brochures, what is the responsibility of staff members, what is the responsibility of the parent? How can, or the family, how can we support these initiatives and the community, and what ways can they be involved and to connect and support the love of reading, the joy of reading throughout this school year. Also, under math, many of our teachers have already started to receive a math endorsement through the numbers training that they received, and the three Ls training. So we had four teachers per building thus far. We will continue to send more teachers throughout the year and in years to come, and this additional math endorsement will support the additional learning and expertise of our teachers. Also, as we look at cultural responsive practices, you're likely aware that we're engaging in a district-wide book study, from Zaretta Hammond's book, Culture Responsive Teaching in the Brain. Every single employee, classified and certified, BOE and school staff, will engage in this book study. And so we have done the work of purchasing the books, so most employees have this in hand so far, and we'll get you a copy if you don't already have one. And then we have blocked out one Wednesday per month for the Culture Responsive Teaching book study. So the principals will, and their leadership teams, will lead these discussions. We do have a format, a guide, that this is kind of where people should be in the pacing. However, we do want to make sure we're able to go at the right pace, and if there are more questions, we need to park there and have conversations before we just move on. This is what this year is really about, is about setting the foundation for success as we move forward through this. And again, this is not just our educational staff, our budget team, our operations team, our marketing team. Everyone will engage in this work, so we can increase our capacity and have a foundational understanding of culture responsive practices. As we move into SEL, that has been a focus for several years. We have some new things underway for this school year. You see, one of the highlighted bullets is that students in grades 10 through 12 will engage in a six-hour Mental Health First Aid course this year. And so we're really excited about that. We know that in years past, we have poured into our staff, poured into them with the PD around restorative practices, discipline that restores, a lot of training has been done. This year, we're engaging students in this work. And you also see, at the middle school level, grade 7 through 9, we will also engage students around conflict resolution. So the students are now moving into this space, and it will help our district be more responsive to the SEL needs of our stakeholders. And so, and then lastly, parent and family engagement. We are so excited to have onboard a family and community engagement specialist in each and every building. They are fully staffed, they've been trained throughout the summer, they're already working together to come up with plans to engage families in new and innovative ways. And you will hear also a more robust plan, not only for this bucket, but for each of those buckets. So as we move on through our instructional focus, we do want to call up Dr. Kristy Harrison, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, that will take us through our professional learning that has taken place thus far for teachers.
Hi, good evening. We have had a very busy summer. We have planned several things. We had our new teacher orientation that just happened. We welcomed 250 new teachers in the orientation. You can see some of the pictures of some of the events that we've had. During that time, we really focused on a number of things, including the five big rocks that we talked about, and really helping teachers to navigate and understand where they are and where they're headed and what we're doing this year. We also had our Teacher Academy this summer. We held two sessions. Between those two sessions, we had 150 staff members that came and participated in those sessions. Those were hands-on learning directly around reading and math, and giving the supports that teachers need. So you can see in one of the pictures here, they're actually making objects and taking those with them, so that they are ready and prepared as they get into the classroom. Our curriculum team also provided building-specific trainings at multiple buildings this summer, and those professional developments were really more to the specific needs of the building, but many of those focused on building relationships, on the reading and math, and back to those five pillars. We have our Learning Institute that is happening currently, and our teachers are engaged in a number of sessions, from cultural responsive practices, to Four Dimensions of Execution, and various other topics. And we've just really been pushing out a lot of activities. We had, not only with our professional learning, our teachers, we also have been then providing opportunities for the family support that Dr. Davis just shared about, and other professional staff as well. And I will pass it over to Ms. Thomas, who is going to talk to us about the Leadership Institute.
Good evening to our board members and to our KCPS community. I'm Crystal Thomas, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership. We had a great time participating in professional learning during our Leadership Institute. During day one, Dr. Davis opened by laying the foundation for the historical, social, political, and economic landscape that currently impacts educational systems today. He provided the why, why we need to move our work forward using a culturally responsive lens. We have been rolling this work out comprehensively and in alignment with our Blueprint 2030 work. For two days, we partnered with the Leadership Academy for an even deeper dive into culturally responsive practices and how these practices translate into the classroom. This is critical in ensuring we use the same language and understand high-quality implementation. The comprehensive approach includes the district-wide book study, using the work from Zaretta Hammond, Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain, to make sure practices are interwoven into every aspect of the school structure. Daily, Assistant Superintendents made Blueprint 2030 connections to work that was previously done in the district. To ensure that implementation begins to happen at a high level, we engaged school teams with school improvement planning to support the work. They were able to discuss and exchange ideas about how to best move the work forward, and there was lots of robust conversation. The last day, we focused on operational excellence. Departments presented updates and allowed time for principal questions. Our goal is to make sure our work is comprehensive, aligned, and ongoing. Next, we will hear from our interim Chief of Staff, Sharnissa Holliday Scott.
Good evening. And I will continue with enrollment. So we will touch on the enrollment fair. As you know, our enrollment fair commenced July 18th through the 20th. We were open during that period of time, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., to encourage families and to also be accessible for families, because we understand that not all families are able to come during our typical workday in order to enroll. So we wanted to extend that time for families to be able to come after they got off of work and to engage. During those days of the enrollment fair, we were able to connect with 419 families. That resulted in 268 new enrollees. And so you may ask, well, what did the other families do when they came? We offered multiple services during that enrollment fair. So that included opportunities for families to have address changes. So some of the families came in, they didn't need to be new enrollees, they needed to modify addresses. They also came in to, for language services. There may be a need in that area. They also came in to check special education status, and to make sure transportation was set and available. Some came in to look at pre-K and Head Start. So those were multiple services provided. We also had a number of community supports available as well during the enrollment fair. I would like to acknowledge some of our community partners that were available during that time. That was the Kansas City Public Library, the Kansas City Housing Authority, University Health, formerly Truman Medical Center, Urban Tech, Matty Rhodes Center, Link, and the NAACP was there for voter registration. So families were able to come in, address enrollment, but also engage in other community services that they may have found that they were in need of. Also, there was an opportunity for families. We had an opportunity for them to apply if they were looking for a job with KCPS. So we had stations available, because, as you know, we were looking for some bus drivers. We had opportunities for them to apply for security, as well as child nutrition services workers. So if they felt like that they had a skill set in those areas, we were encouraging them to apply, because there's no better place to work than KCPS, correct? Exactly. So we also provided a satisfaction survey to those we came in contact with. Unfortunately, all of them did not fill out the survey, or necessarily leave the survey with us when they left. 196 took the survey, and from that satisfaction survey, 95.65% expressed that they were satisfied and very satisfied with our process and what was going on. We did have, however, 4.35% that suggested to make some improvements or some modifications to that. So I do know that the admissions team did review the satisfaction surveys, and they are taking it to note, what are some of the changes that they could make for next year, or the availability for the enrollment fair, so that we can improve that experience. Also, we are engaged that after the enrollment fair, enrollment still does not stop for us here at KCPS. So enrollment has actually been annexed to the Board of Education Building in our Westport Room. And so we will be operating out of the Westport Room through September 9th, 2022. And this is to allow a larger space, because we do know families are continually coming in to enroll. So it's a larger space for families to be able to wait. We also have a kids' corner, so families are encouraged to bring their kids with them. So there is someone from our pre-K staff who is there to provide activities for students while the parents are going through the enrollment process. We have been able to provide education supports, so that parents are able to get questions answered when they come in. So that supports include pre-K, special education, our language services department, and Infinite Campus Parent Portal access. So many times, you've heard us talk about that sometimes there were concerns with parents being able to access the parent portal. One of the intentional activities that enrollment is doing is to ensure every parent who comes in through the BOE, once they leave, they will have the parent portal on their phone as an app, and be able to see how it works. So that is a meaningful, that we're finding very meaningful, and the parents are finding very appreciative. Currently, we have checked our enrollment numbers as late as this morning. We are at 14,333 students, pre-K through 12, for the '22-'23 school year, and that's as of today. So as I'm sharing with you, there is continual enrollment. So we are having not only parents coming into the Board of Education Building, but they are still applying online. So as you know, we will continue to update you as we go through this season of enrollment. Next, I want to touch on an update regarding equity and communications. And during this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Esperanza Soriano McQuary, Ms. Hope McQuary. She is our new Chief Marketing and Communications Officer. So we are so happy she is with us. And so for communications, communications has, is being very intentional about making sure our communications are inclusive for our families. Many times, we may miss that, because we are such a diverse district, and with Dr. Collier's emphasis on culturally responsive teaching practices, that means being culturally responsive in all the areas of the district, including communications. So we are continuing to monitor our KCPS website to ensure that the website is translatable in multiple languages, as well as being ADA compliant. Currently, if you look at our website, there is an opportunity, if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, if you need to change the language to view the website, there are nine languages available. nine languages available, including English. So that allows our families to be able to modify the website to see it in their native language if they want to view the website. One of the other behaviors we are doing is to ensure our website attachments and school information is available in multiple languages. We just recently noted that although you are able to change the language on the website, you may not always be able to change the PDFs that are attached to the website. So that was one of the things we did note. And so, for example, one of the main things that parents look at all the time is the school calendar. Well, it's a PDF, and when you look at it, it's only in English. So we are beginning to make that modification. You will see that if you look at the school calendar right now, there is a version that has already been translated that is uploaded in Spanish. Also, our Language Services Department, they have translated the school calendar in multiple other languages to provide to the families that receive services through their department so that they too can access the school calendar in their native language. We are also continuing our process with securing a vendor that will assist us in reviewing KCPS communications, especially in making them culturally relevant. And we're focused on the Hispanic community because that is a large portion of our district. That is approximately 24% of our student population. So we want to continue to make sure that our practices are culturally relevant and including all of our students in our, in our school district. And next, we want to talk about back-to-school nights. So as we go through our update, we are getting prepared for back-to-school nights. When you look at our website, initially, when you go on there, there's an automatic pop-up that reminds you that school is beginning August 22nd. But there's an opportunity to select that pop-up, and it'll take you directly to the back-to-school website. On that back-to-school website, you will be able to see such things as bell times, reminder of the start date, back-to-school orientation, and back-to-school nights. So all of the schools have their back-to-school nights are listed on that website. So they're there, the date, the school, the time, and the type of event that they are having. So that's available to our families for our families to be able to see that. We also know that schools individually are reaching out to families regarding their back-to-school nights, but we wanted to be able to have at least a back-to-school page where parents can say, I can go on here, I can see uniform information, I can see the dates, the times, the bell times, and be able to see it all at once. And finally, with our most exciting time coming up, this Saturday is our Summer Fest. So that is our KCPS Summer Fest. At this point in time, as of today, I have been notified that there have been over 3,000 families that have registered for Summer Fest. And so Summer Fest is Saturday, August 13th, at East High School, which is 1924 Van Brunt Boulevard. I also wanted to show an example of how we are also making sure that our flyers and our notices to parents, if you notice, that was in, that is in Spanish, that is on your screen. But we want to make sure when we notify parents that they're able to access the information and be able to understand what we are sending them. So for that, for Summer Fest, not only will backpacks with school supplies be available, we have also partnered with community health organizations to provide immunizations, COVID-19 vaccines, lead testing, and other student health services. So those will be available, and our partners will be there. So we would like to thank in advance WOMP Health Services, Children's Mercy Hospital, Fox 4 Love Fund for Children, University Health, Kansas City Health Department, and Samuel U. Rogers Health Center for making this Summer Fest possible. We are also partnering with our Kansas City Public School Education Foundation, and it has been estimated that we have been in receipt of approximately $85,000 of support in order to make our schools our Summer Fest. So thank you for that on our, any questions regarding our back-to-school update?
Thank you. Ms. Wolfsee?
Thank you. Quick question about Summer Fest, and then I have my other, well, physicals, because I know I always get that question from parents. That will be available that day? Great. I just wanted to tell you, I was pleasantly surprised because I checked the, some of the school websites, and I'm seeing those also being updated before school, which was one of the other things that we had talked about as a board. So I just, you didn't have it on your slides, but I, it's an important part because that's where parents are looking right now, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Abarka.
That was fast. I thought we had more questions. See, now it caught me unprepared. All right, so back to student transportation first off. I know I asked this, I think, in our finance meeting this morning, but where can parents call when they don't know where their kids are at? Maybe they don't have the app, but they know a phone number exists, and will that phone line be answered until the last bus drops off the last kid?
I'm going to let Dr. Davis.
So answer is yes, we do have a transportation hotline, and it will be staffed in the evening hours until that last bus is home. So we do have that in place for this year.
Duly noted there. My second question, or maybe it's a comment, and Dr. Davis, it's probably back to you. The culturally responsive work that you have led for a long time and the district has embraced is so critically important. It's something that I think is so dramatically needed across the region, probably the country, when it comes to how we educate our kids. And I think it's critically important that we acknowledge that as a board and that the equity policy really drives this work and that we got to get on the bus here, pun completely intended, because we've got a lot of work to do. Our kids deserve this. And I know there were some questions earlier, and I think it's important that we reaffirm that this is the commitment we've made.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Well, and I think to your point, Mr. Abarka, that's part of the reason that Dr. Collier pulled the equity piece up into the cabinet level so that it's, that always is represented in everything that we do. So appreciate the leadership there, Dr. Collier. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm glad that you said that. We see equity as a priority in this school system, and what we have found in the past that although we meant well, sometimes we would begin initiatives and go, get down the road, and our equity leader, who really, I mean, Dr. Davis really checks us around equity and everything that we do, but a lot of times he would find out about initiatives when we're well down the road. And it's really important that, that at the genesis of work and initiatives that we're doing, that we're thinking about all of that through an equity lens. And so I think this is going to be really valuable, that he is at the cabinet level, at the beginning of those conversations that we're having, and that he is really helping us lean into being a truly equitable school system.
Agreed. Dr. Jones?
Yes, I really appreciated Dr. Collier's points and Mr. Abarka's as well on that. I really appreciate all the efforts that are going into translations and making these, if this information accessible. I would just ask that we also, y'all always hear me say, make it plain language as well. So if we could maybe aim for a sixth grade to eighth grade reading level on as many things as we can, I think that would be helpful for all language learners and readers. Thank you.
Here, here. Ms. Cortez?
So I actually wanted to follow on Mr. Abarka's comment because I think there's potentially some opportunity in, I'll call it, a next phase. When I think about like the book study that you're doing internally with the KCPS teams, I think there's an opportunity in a version 2.0 potentially to invite some of our community into that learning. Because instead of letting the headlines drive that knowledge, we could do what we do best and teach the community who we are a part of what we really mean when we talk about culturally responsive teaching.
Can I just jump in there? Because I'm glad that you said that because I had that in my notes to come back when we were done. This is actually morphing now into a citywide book study. It's already happening. Everywhere where I've gone to just share our emphasis for the year, people have asked, how can we be a part of that? And I've had enough folks ask that I know now that we need to be really intentional about bringing others in. So we are going to provide opportunities, not only for our internal staff, but for the community to join us for some discussions around the culturally responsive teaching. We're going to share the guides that we've created, the guides that we're giving to our staff. We're going to share that with others so they can follow along so that when we bring them in to join us, they can be right on pace with us. So this will be more of a citywide, and we welcome anyone who would like to be a part of this. Because I actually, I think this is good for all children. This will help children across this city when adults and educators really began to understand what it means to be culturally responsive. And I've had people say to me, well, we've heard of this, we already know what it is, but in many cases, we've talked about it, and we've put it on, labels on some of the documents that we have, but we really aren't seeing it in practice. And so this year, we're trying to be intentional about really digging in, what does it mean to operationalize culturally responsive teaching and practices, not just talk about what it is in theory. So that's what we're looking at. This is going to be a year of learning for all of us. And so as educators here, we're excited about it, but we're welcoming others in the city who would like to join us.
Do I see any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Port.
Are all staff participating in the book study? Did you say that, not just teachers?
Yes, it's all staff.
Okay. Perfect.
And I'm assuming the board will get a copy of...
I have a note.
Thank you.
Yes, board members will receive a copy of the book.
Great.
Yes, we will tell you which chapters you need to read by when. And perhaps maybe some of you all might want to lead some of the discussions.
That's what I was thinking. What a great way to do community engagement. Okay. Any other questions for this portion?
I do have a question about the bell times because I know we had done some surveying about the bell times. Was there, maybe I missed this, was there formal communication that was sent out that things are staying the same in case there's any confusion there? And did I miss that?
I don't think we have sent anything out to say we're remaining with our current bell schedule, but we can, we can do that. Yeah. Because, yeah, you're right, we did have some discussions about change, and we decided that we didn't want to do that at that time. But yes, we can communicate that out.
So are we done with the equity policy conversation?
Nice try.
I can never resist a temptation, Dr. Davis.
Well, I will take that as a hint to move things along. And with that, good evening, Board Chair Hogan, Superintendent Collier, members of the board. I'm Darrell Davis, and I'm here to bring an update on our Equity Policy 0.0. I was just before you in May, where we really shared many of our successes for this past year, and we will be back in front of you in May 2023 with the successes of this school year, and I anticipate that there will be many. This presentation is more around setting the foundation for what we plan to engage in for this school year. And so our topic and relevant policy clearly is Policy 0.0, adopted in 2018 by the Board of Education that does guide our mission, does guide our work throughout this school system as relates to implementing equity in all equity initiatives. In the final paragraph that's highlighted, it really is a mandate to our school system that the board will hold itself and all KCPS employees accountable for building a culture of equity at all levels of our district in order to meet the responsibilities that we have to the entirety of the students and families we serve. So what does that mean to build a culture of equity at all levels? So to Dr. Collier's earlier point, this year, we're really moving beyond a lot of our foundational work we've done the past several years, and we want to operationalize equity at every level, in every department, throughout our school system. And so when we look at this list of departments, you know, what might that look like in the classroom? If I am responding to misconduct in a classroom, am I doing it in a way that is responsible and that is humanizing? If it is in professional learning, are we creating professional learning opportunities that will empower and equip our educators to be more culturally responsive as we move along? And so as we look at every single department, budgeting, are we keeping track of data and how we're allocating resources for, according to the data, to schools and students who need resources most? It's in everything we do. There is no department that is exempt from implementing equity in their offices. So we are, and since we are implementing equity district-wide, obviously, there are a lot of data points that we're monitoring. So these are just a few I would like to highlight for this year. So last year, the board approved, as an expense, hiring college access specialists in every single high school. So that investment should bring a return and show higher enrollment in post-secondary schools, colleges, trade schools, et cetera, as a result of the additional support. So we're going to monitor are more students applying to post-secondary institutions? Do they get onto more college campuses because we now have individuals in the school that are positioned to do that? Also, our stakeholder feedback survey, I've showed you several of those over the past few years, both student feedback and staff feedback. This year, we'll move into also getting the perspective of parents, how equity is moving in our system, and really get their insight that will, and we'll use that data to fuel our future endeavors as in response to that. And then, of course, with this culturally responsive book study, we'll have to monitor participation. This is meant to be 100% participation, but we'll, we'll need to make sure we have metrics in place to then be able to share back to you in May, how did that, how did we actually implement that? And this is just a quote from Gloria Ladsen-Billings, that ultimately, we want everyone to leave this school year knowing that culturally responsive teaching is simply good teaching. And so we will, with that, move on to our history and previous context. There are so many initiatives that we've done in the past, we couldn't fit them all on one slide, but here are a few of those. One of the foundational pieces was to create an Equity Steering Committee, a group of individuals across our school system, diverse individuals in terms of gender, ethnicity, but also in department representation. We have parents on the committee, community members on the committee. That's been foundational and having multiple perspectives as we monitor equity implementation. Of course, the implicit bias training has been very foundational for us and sets the foundation for every other courageous conversation that we have as an organization. And essentially, what we've done is we're expanding the number of people who are responsible for the implementation of equity initiatives. So really, even though this is a Policy 0.0 presentation, every presentation we'll hear this year is really an extension of an equity presentation, whether it's going to be through communications, its curriculum, you will hear equity infused through everything that you see this year. And so we are all equity leaders here in this room, and the same for those in the school building. So as we look at our current status, we have a lot planned for this year, continue to engage our staff around courageous conversations. Our Focus Thursday, Friday trainings have been really popular with directors and principals and executive teams. This year, we're going to find a way to bring the leadership teams from the school, so the instructional coaches, lead teachers, those who were with the principals during the Leadership Institute, making sure they are invited into that because the principals can't do this work alone. They need the support of those leadership teams, those other members, and so they have to be a part of these conversations as well, and we're going to work to make that occur. You heard about our new teachers' boot camp, the Principal's Leadership Institute, Culture Responsive Practices was woven into that. And then last year, we launched a Student Equity Action Committee to center equity and student voice, and that will continue on this year. I do have to point out, this picture in the lower right-hand corner, there's a great photographer on that photo, but you happened to see a board member, Abarka, drop through our new employee orientation and shared a few words, and that was our implicit bias training. So appreciate him stopping by.
You just made his day.
All right, so also with current status, this year is really about coordinated shifts. Equity cannot be realized in one year and two years, but how are we noticing the shifts that are occurring each and every day, every month, even if they're micro shifts? And not only shifts in our data, but shifts in mindsets. How are we speaking to the change in mindset that needs to occur in order to best meet the needs of our students? What is it that we... What is it that we truly understand about our students, about the culture, the backgrounds, the communities that they're coming from and bringing those assets into the school? So in what ways are we engaging our staff around that understanding? As we talk about behaviors, what are the actions that we should see? What should we see in our classrooms? What should we see in our leadership? What does coaching look like as it looks, as it relates to the behaviors? The behaviors, you know, for these leaders here in the room, is equity on the weekly department agenda? In what ways are we monitoring our disparities in moving and advancing equity with intentionality? Ultimately, equity is about changing the system. It's not about changing kids. It's about improving the conditions that tend to marginalize students. And so there's a lot of work that has to occur throughout this year, and we're being intentional with that. So as we move to barriers, and we're looking at how do we address the barriers? And so some of this work started with our leadership team retreat, and really recognizing that we have a lot of strategies. If we had to go district-wide, we have hundreds of strategies that we're implementing. But if we look at our data, and we're not seeing seismic shifts in the data, then we have to be real around having this discussion, what is preventing us from realizing our goal? And so as we engage in this work and then come up with the root causes for what is standing in the way, we're working day in and day out to improve conditions, to improve student outcomes, but if we're not seeing the gains that we're hoping to, we're going to dig in and do the groundwork in coming up with our hypotheses, coming up with what are those root causes to that, what are those barriers? And then we'll move toward solutions and strategies that will help us achieve that goal. Again, we've started some of that work, but we're going to move that into the schools so that this work is happening at every single level. This is the work of achieving equity. So as we talk about addressing barriers, clearly, it can't just be, oh, you find the root cause, well, now what do you do with that? How do you identify their root cause or their hypothesis, but then how do we get to a different outcome? So these are just some examples, that if we determine that these are the reasons that efforts are not moving or advancing as fast as we want, let's say if the expectations are not clear, which means that we don't know what to do, well, then, how do we create policies and procedures that then make it clear as to this is the next step, here's how you implement, here is what, so that now we eliminate that being the root cause? If it's a lack of knowledge and skill, or in other words, we don't know how to do it, then how are we mapping out quality professional development in order to meet the needs of our educators and others who have to implement the work? And so you see, this is the work that we've started, there's a lot more work to do, because we have five big rocks, five areas of focus, and we have to do this in every single one. And so we have promised this year that we will have a parent organization in every school. My understanding is that we had about 14 at the end of last year that did not, so we've started that work of identifying what are those root causes, but by the end of this semester, you will have a functioning organization, even if it's two to three parents, they will be up and running, and then we can always build from there. Of course, those who are already up and running and thriving with committees will continue to boost those. That's just one example, but that work has to occur across every foundational pillar until we come forth, and you'll see the work that we're engaged in. So as we look at measures of success, I always like to go back to our four constructs for equity. And this is, these four constructs have been shared throughout our organization. This is how we define equity. It is to increase access. And we always say, availability is not the same as accessibility. How are we increasing representation? How are individuals able to participate in meaningful ways, not just be invited to the committee, but in what ways are they given voice, and so that they're empowered to contribute in decision-making? And then ultimately, equity is around high outcomes for all. And so what might this look like in terms of measures for success? We could give examples, you know, across communications, across here, but this example we want to give is around what might this look like in the classroom? So for access, in what ways are we providing cultural and linguistic access to curriculum? When we look at high outcomes, how are we realizing achievement gains, but also the social, cultural, and personal identity development? So as we look at representation, everything that we put in front of students, have we considered who are the authors? Who are the main characters? Are we putting resources in front of our students that reflect the identities of the students and families we serve? Representation in staffing, what is the data that we're tracking to make sure that as we're assigning staff at all levels, not just the teachers, administration, even here, that we're intentional, we're at least understanding that the demographic representation that we have across our very diverse school system? So we are monitoring success in that way. This is the timeline for this year, and some of this has already started. We already had equity-oriented PD at our Leadership Summit, that was really part one. We're going to have part two, three, four through our Focus Thursday, Friday sessions, and we'll complete that throughout the year. As Dr. Collier stated, this is a year of learning. We're setting the foundation for really being able to dig in and do the work that needs to be done in our classrooms, but building that muscle, building that capacity, and leveraging some of those teachers who already have a high skill set in that. So it's not going to be top-down, it's really, again, principals can't do this alone, it's leveraging those leaders within the building. Really excited that we are currently engaged in a culturally responsive curriculum audit. We've identified a vendor, a forward ED, they are phenomenal, and that vendor, right now, we're gathering all the data through their data requests, they're going to look at all of our curriculum, and we will have, I'm showing the highlight in December, we will have the findings back to us by then. Then by May, when we come back in front of you with the May 2023 Equity Update, we'll share what are our responses to those findings, so that as we go into next school year, we have a more culturally responsive curriculum as a result of the findings that we receive before we go to Christmas break, winter break, I'm sorry. And at this time, we'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Questions? Ms. Buckner?
I'm really excited about this, you know, that this is my jam. I want to encourage you to lean into your board, namely me, as we explore this, and for, you know, professional development opportunities. One thing that I really want us to caution against is, when we start talking about culturally responsive teaching and equity, to Dr. Collier's point, we can really learn into being real buzzwordy here, and it becomes status quo when we use culturally responsive teaching when we are actually, we actually mean multicultural or social justice education, right? So the difference is, I just, I just need to say this, because I don't want us to get later into this, and I'm hearing and seeing like accessibility, representation, because culturally responsive teaching is much, much more than that, right? I would love to see more language and more initiative around, around the aspect of culturally responsive teaching where we are impacting the learning capacity of students, the cognitive aspect of culturally responsive teaching, and just building academic mindset and resilience, right? So I just want to like caution us against like, like this is great, but in, for what outcome, right? For academic excellence, right? And our students are struggling with academic excellence because of these barriers. So I just want to make sure that we name, this is really geared towards their, impacting their learning capacity.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thank you for offering yourself up as a leverage point, and you will be called upon. And really, if I can come back to this slide, just to maybe clarify, so as we look at equity, and equity is in everything, this is really on the bigger piece on equity, in that it's access, representation, meaningful participation, high outcomes in everything we do. We do realize that culturally responsive practices is a sliver within that, and so this slide was really speaking to the broader, but I agree with you that as we engage in this work around culturally responsive teaching, and we started this with the principals, leaning on some of the foundational work from Gloria Latson-Billings, Geneva Gay, Paulo Freire, Bael Hooks, a lot of this foundation has started. And then, as we move into the book study this year through Zaretta Hammond's work, and we plan to have her here as a capstone, you know, once we've completed this, but we will get into those tenets that you mentioned. And within that, you know, understanding not only ourselves as cultural beings, but also how are we seeing our students as cultural beings? How are we, you know, looking at the social justice aspect that's still even grounded within the culturally responsive practices work? And I also want to say this, that it cannot be a buzzword, but people really have to understand it at a deep level so that we don't cause harm. It can't be, well, let me just learn these two strategies, and if I do them really well, then I should see improvement. Well, what happens is, if, because we have to take what we learn in that book study, but then we have to contextualize it. And so just because I learn about, let's take, for example, call and response, but if I don't fully understand the context around call and response, I could do harm. One, if I don't know that, you know, people who've grown up in, say, a black church, and the joy that comes with the call and response, I don't understand the context, and because I've learned this strategy, I'm now trying to implement it when I'm doing a reading on the Harley Boys and Nancy Drew, it may not necessarily, you know, so we have to take what we learn and make sure it's contextualized in the right moment, and also, we have to make sure we have the right mindset about these strategies, because we can learn about them, but if I'm viewing call and response through a deficit lens, and I don't understand it, I as the person implementing this, I'm frowning upon it, then the kids who get joy around this are going to sense that we can do harm. So this year is really about learning. It's about learning, engaging in conversations, so that it's not just the what, it's the how, it's the why, understanding how to do this in the right way, and we want to really engage in that through discussion, to your point, to do it in the right way. It's not a buzzword, but you can actually go into classrooms, and it feels different, and kids feel empowered, and that's what we definitely want to work toward.
It would be helpful if this was illustrated for our parents and for our teachers that are tuning in, exactly what it is. I think you and I are having conversations, you're using terms like call and response that some of our, even our board members might not quite understand, because we're educators. I would love to see that illustrated clearly with the cognitive aspect, I think it's for the broader community too, where the CRTs can get mixed up. So I think, yeah, we need to illustrate that clearly next time we have this discussion.
Okay, will do.
Yep.
Ms. Ford?
Yeah, I was just going to double down on that point. It seems like there's just a piece about common language that could be kind of helpful to make sure that we're all kind of using the same words in the same way. And I just lost my thought. Don't go into Candace, you got me off track with my thought.
We can come back to you if you want.
Yeah, come back to me.
Okay, Mr. Barker?
Yeah, again, I couldn't echo how proud I am to see you thriving here in this space and leading the district on an incredible journey. I guess my question is around, it seems like we're focusing on a lot of at-school, which usually we do, is there going to be any component that focuses on the home environment as well?
Yes. So through our equity work, we want to make sure we're centering all voices. And so the Student Equity Action Committee is just one way that we're centering this conversation with students. We also are launching some pilot affinity groups for students. We have a number of ways in which we are capturing staff voice, also through focus groups. And then another important aspect is going to be parent participation, and then also community participation. We have not mapped that out as much to this point, but it is on our radar as part of that pillar around family and community engagement. So that work, we'll have, I'll have more detail for you in May, but that is on our radar.
And I guess the last question I have is, again, around my colleague, Ms. Butler's point. CRT is something that you have to deal with. How do we get around that? Because it's already been broached to me, and I lean into it, and say, this is, we're teaching accurate history at this point. So how do we get to a phase where we're blowing past that? And maybe it's through the language we use, but what is the way, what are ways that we can combat that as the board too?
So the board has done a tremendous step by making this a mandate. And so by setting equity as a priority, now gives all of us the charge, that is everyone's responsibility. Because if we can simply opt out, that, oh, that's not me, somebody else, that's the person down the hall that signed up for the Equity Committee, or that's the Equity Guy, the policy says it's everyone's responsibility, and then we can then hold folks accountable. In what ways are we seeing that in your data, in your classroom, in your school, in your department, across the district, because that is our responsibility? I'd say that's the biggest thing, and the board has already taken that step. In addition to the CRT, unfortunately, a lot of people steal any conversation around diversity, equity, inclusion, people think that's CRT, the Critical Race Theory. We do not teach Critical Race Theory, it's not something that is, you know, mentioned in any of our workshops, and so we do need to work together with the board, with our organization, to fully educate individuals as to what it is, so that they can see, oh, that's not what I'm looking at, that's not what I'm hearing, it's not a part of, and simply because we're teaching accurate history is not CRT. And the last thing I'll say is, I know that the sunshine requests keep coming through about, you know, key words, have you used these words? We haven't used any of the words they're looking for, but it is something that continues to, 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 yep.
I just want to add, thank you, Dr. Davis, you did well clarifying that, but I just want to reiterate that culturally responsive teaching is not the same thing as Critical Race Theory. And I just find it strange that, that all of a sudden, in education, this has become a hot topic. You probably are not going to find any K-12 district that's actually teaching Critical Race Theory. It's not something that you teach, and as you said, teaching black history or just telling the truth about history is not Critical Race Theory. It has five very clear tenets. It began as a theory in the legal field, and then it transferred over into some of the other fields like education, and it's really about grounding your philosophy. It's not something you're actually teaching in your classroom. So I know it's been stated that we teach it here, I've said from the beginning, we do not teach Critical Race Theory, and you probably won't find it in any K-12 system. In a lot of cases, you may not even find it in bachelor's level work. So I just think there, a lot of education needs to happen. Across our state, many of the leaders need to understand and really research what Critical Race Theory actually is, and then they will discover that it's not something that we teach. I actually wrote about it in my own dissertation, so I clearly understand it, I know those five tenets, and we do not teach it, those never come up in the classroom.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. The people that are propagating some of that stuff don't care to know about it. So that in and of itself is a challenge. Ms. Ford, did you come back to your, you're good? Okay. And Ms. Cortez?
I would just follow on that dialogue work. It comes back to opening our doors and engaging people in the real conversation, because I think it's easy to, to use pejoratives and to mythologize and all those other things when, you know, when you're standing far away.
Yes.
But I think in terms of bringing the community in to understand, what are we studying? What are we learning? How do we do that? We're not looking to convert the world, we're looking to make sure that the people who want to understand are equipped with knowledge so that they can be our advocates instead of our critics.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. If we have someone that's teaching a theory that's designed for third-year law school students to five-year-olds, that teacher should not be criticized. They need a medal. But it's not being taught here in KCPS.
Hashtag facts. Dr. Jones?
I could make a comment about third-year law students, because they're not a whole lot smarter than kindergartners.
I'm good.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you, Dr. Davis.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Dr. Collier?
Okay, we are at regular business items, and we have three items that we'd like to bring to the board for approval. We thought it was important to try to get these approved prior to the start of school, and so this is why we're bringing them to this board policy monitoring meeting. The first is Operation Breakthrough. And the administration recommends approval of the renewal of pre-K cooperative partnership to provide quality learning and prepares pre-K students for kindergarten readiness. The total estimated cost is $273,394 and will serve 40 students.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. Questions? Ms. Cortez?
So this is, this is about this contract, but really broader, and is really more a request. I'm not expecting an answer tonight. But as we talk about expansion of pre-K seats, what is our strategy to make sure that our pre-K seats are full and that we don't have families on waiting lists in the city while we have tens or hundreds of seats open or turning? So I really, I think it's important that the board and the community understand how we're going to make sure that we maximize the value of the seats that we're creating.
Absolutely, and there will be a focus this year to ensure that our pre-K seats are full. We have made some shifts around the pre-K department and where it sits, and so we'll be making some improvements there for certain this year. But I can share more in the Friday update or, okay.
Ms. Buckner?
This is kind of a squirrel, but kind of related. Are we having issues like filling our teacher positions for our pre-K?
Yes, we are.
So we're expanding the seats, but we are having a hard time filling the teacher, the teacher, yeah, we're having a hard time filling those classrooms with teachers.
Yes, we are, but we're still working to find certified staff.
All right, I think we're good. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the renewal of the cooperative agreement between KCPS and Operation Breakthrough? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
The motion passes.
Okay, this next item is similar to Operation Breakthrough. This is the Emanuel Family and Child Development Center. The administration recommends approval of the renewal of pre-K cooperative partnership to provide quality learning and preparing pre-K students for kindergarten readiness. The total estimated cost is $410,091 and will serve 60 students.
Questions? Seeing none? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the cooperative agreement between KCPS and Emanuel Family and Child Development Center regarding pre-K cooperative partnership?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Abstain.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
I have to abstain as well due to work conflict.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Just real quick, Mr. Barca, can you identify your, the reason for your abstention, please?
I had a kid who went to school there that didn't have the best experience.
All right, and yes, the motion passes. Dr. Collier?
And the last item, IB Middle Years Program at Foreign Language Academy. The administration recommends approval of the authorization from International Baccalaureate to Foreign Language Academy to offer the Middle Years Program. The Middle Years Program will help students develop their potential, explore their own learning preferences, take appropriate risks, and have a strong sense of potential identity. The estimated annual fee after the school, after the school has been authorized is $10,050.
Got it. Questions? No? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement with International Baccalaureate, Baccalaureate Organization?
So moved.
Second.
June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, I think it comes over to me now, Dr. Collier, for the board director's report, and we've just got a couple of committee reports for tonight, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Wolfsee for government relations update.
Thank you, Chair Hogan. So just want to remind everybody that the Government Relations Committee brought forward the legislative priorities for the state last board meeting. And so those, we'll try to get those out in a legislative, or I'm sorry, in an update to our Legislative Alerts list. And we'll be moving on to our local priorities. We have a government relations meeting on Tuesday, August 16th, where we'll be reviewing the city's housing and tax incentive changes. And so I would encourage everybody to participate if they'd like to learn more about that. I would highly encourage my board member buddies to maybe dial in at eight o'clock on a Tuesday. It is virtual, I'm just, but that way you'll be able to learn more about those upcoming changes. Then also, I wanted to let folks know that the Senate has been conducting, they've conducted one hearing this summer already. It's a Senate Interim Ed Committee that is working on transparency and accountability in preparation for the next legislative session. And that next meeting is August 17th, and I believe KCPS will be testifying at that as well, sharing our systems analysis and landscape study that we, you know, have done for like the last five years. So that also will be in the Legislative Alerts update. I believe it begins at 9:00 AM. I may be wrong on that, so I can, we'll add it, oh, 10:00. It starts at 10:00 AM. And those that also want to follow along on that, you can go to the Senate website, and they have it. It's usually in the, I think it's in the Senate chamber, but you can, we'll have the link to that on the Legislative Alerts, which I keep mentioning, and I just, I'm going to plug it almost every meeting that you let me. Those that are interested in following along with government affairs, both at the state and local level, we have an email that you can send your email to, and we'll add you to the list. We do not spam you, but it is legislativealerts@kcpublixschools.org if you want to stay apprised of these sorts of issues.
All right, questions for Ms. Wolfsee? Nope, okay. Ms. Cortez for finance report?
Just in case you need some help going to sleep tonight. The Finance Committee actually met this morning with Ms. Thompson, now working as our interim CFOO. Thank you for taking the lead there. And the committee is, as we did last year as well, we spent some time today going over some, some beginning-of-school items, some of which were talked about tonight. We talked about the, the planning for the agenda for the year, what topics we will cover as we go through the audit, and we work on budget updates, planning, and probably the most important thing that we want to make sure we get back on the agenda this year is community engagement. We really kind of, we had talked about community engagement at the Finance Committee, how we engage more of our public, our families, in the budgeting, understanding the budgeting process, hearing their voice during the budgeting process. We kind of set that aside last year as part of the Blueprint 2030 engagement, right? We didn't want to be doing too many layers of community engagement, but as we, as we kind of bring Blueprint 2030 to its pinnacle here in the near term, one of the things that we're going to be working on, and we'll do it in coordination with the Community Engagement Committee as well, is really to think about how we best engage our community before we get to the May budget hearing, when we hear a very small number of voices and the budgeting process is largely complete. So we would really ask our public and everyone kind of involved in the process to just be aware that the more the community knows and understands, I think the more effective our budgeting process can be over time. So it's an opportunity to, for the public to know who we are and what we do and why we spend the resources that we get from them the way we do. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. And Dr. Collier, I'll turn it over to you to wrap us up. No? Yeah? Yeah, so you're just going to give agenda items for the next meeting? There they are on the screen.
Okay.
I should know this, I've watched it over and over, okay. It is very different. So next board meeting, August 24th, 2022. Currently, we have several business items that we'll be bringing forward, cornerstones of care, American Rescue Plan grant, our EBS healthcare, Puro Zone, Sherwood Center, and Matty Road Center.
All right, thank you, Dr. Collier. Anything else from the board? All right, then we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.